Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Being 5:00 o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I would like to acknowledge that we're on Treaty VI land, the home of the Maytee, and I would ask everyone to rise and the city clerk to say the prayer.
Oh God, let us each in our own way ask your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. Help us to incorporate into all our decisions those values which will enable us to fulfill our mission, to act as responsible stewards, and to respect and value the cultural and spiritual traditions of all citizens of the City of Prince Albert. For this, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Number three, approval of the agenda. Counselor Head.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move that the agenda for this meeting be approved as presented and that the presentations, delegations, and speakers listed on the agenda be heard when called forward by the mayor.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm missing one. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Oh, I didn't need an acknowledgement. Thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest. You all know the rules on that. If you're in a conflict, you let us know, and you present it to the clerk and the reason for it when the item comes forward. Number five, adoption of the minutes. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Deion. That the minutes of the council meeting, regular council meeting, held September 27, 2021, and the special council meeting held October 12, 2021, be taken, read, and adopted.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
Thank you. And I'll prompt the question. Approval of the minutes. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. And motion carried. Those are proclamations. I had none over the next period requested. Number seven, presentations. There is none. Number eight, public hearings. There is none. Delegations. There is none. Communications. There is none. Number 11, reports of administration and committees. 11.1, report from airport garage renovation tender. Counsel Edwards.
Thanks, Mayor Deion. I also move the Prince Albert Airport garage renovation tender be awarded to R&amp;F Ventures Limited for $233,880.52, which includes PST2, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the city once prepared.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you. I second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Head.
Thank you, your worship. Just a question for the director. And more so, looking at the report, there's two tender bids and one's at $1 million. I guess I just, did they miss the information? Or why was that bid so high? I mean, it makes it easier for us to decide in this room, but just a question for you.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you for that question. So, there could be a number of reasons why they bid, how they bid, but what we generally see is the cause of bids like that is early on, when the tender goes out and contractors are busy, they throw a large number, added a rounded number, so that they can submit a bid. So they submit that right away. And then, when it gets closer to the tender date, when maybe they're less busy, then they start crunching their numbers, getting their supplies, their pricing, their subcontractors. And then what they do is they submit a change, a deletion, to bring it down to the exact number. In this case, they never did that. So they either, A, got too busy to finish their tender, or B, lost interest in it, or maybe C, they couldn't get their supplies or their subcontractors lined up. So their wild, high guess of $1 million stood, and that was the only bid that they submitted, and they never submitted anything else.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll prompt the question. It is now open. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. 11.2, Twinning Project. Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that the city enter into a friendship, city relationship partnership with the community of Thora and Plain in France.
Thank you. Counsel Miller.
I'll second that, Mayor Deion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue.
Tara Lennox, sir.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Sorry. I had received a question that I was not able to answer, a question for administration. Why was it there were two other cities that had requested sister relationships with Prince Albert, and they had been denied in the past? Why was it that those two other applications were denied?
Who wants to tackle that? Okay, just stand by. I gotta get back out of here. Go ahead, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor Deion, to Counsel Lennox Zep's inquiry. Actually, through our review of previous requests that we have received, we didn't come across the reasoning why those were declined. However, we did be able to see that they were declined, so we thought that was worth noting. However, the reasoning, we don't know.
Can I just confirm they were declined at city council level?
I'm not aware of that either.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just speak on behalf of this one. This is a very valuable partnership. It dates back to World War II. It dates back to the British Commonwealth Air Training Plan, which we have many people from Prince Albert was a part of. Fifteen-wing Moosejaw is a result of that entire plan. And what the plan was, was to have people from the British Commonwealth attack and liberate France and into Nazi Germany during World War II. So Mr. Giles, from our particular area, was a part of that. We have other people. We have Wickens Way in my ward. It's named after Don Wickens, who was a member of the Blue Nose Squadron. They had over a 50% casualty rate. They knew that. These men and women willingly went in there and did that. And so to have a relationship with France, a community in France where Canadians are buried, I think is a very positive learning experience for all of us. And I look forward to entering into that partnership and that agreement and learning more about the liberation of France and the defeat of the Nazis during World War II. So I think this is a positive one. The other two, Counsel Lennox Zep mentioned, I think one was China, and it seemed like it was more of an economic partnership that they wanted. And I think the other one was in Africa, and I'm not sure what the relationship was there. But this definitely has connections to Prince Albert. It makes sense, and I'm sure we'll have a unanimous decision in favor of moving forward on this. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with whatever you said on this. We have a connection with the Vet. You know, the other ones, we did not have connections, where we have a direct connection here, and I think it'll be a great partnership. Okay, and no one else is in the queue. I see no other questions. So, Twinning Project is now open. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. He carried unanimously, Dennis. Congratulations, everyone. It's gonna be a great partnership. Okay, 11.3, Police Fleet Reserve Adjustment. Go ahead, Counsel Head.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move that the transfer of $19,852 from the fiscal stabilization fund to the Police Fleet Reserve be approved.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Edwards.
I'll second your worship.
Thank you. Any discussion? See no one in the queue. I'll prompt the question. The questions now open. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. 11.4, Development Permit Application Shelter, 950B Exhibition Drive. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd move that the development permit application for the shelter to be located at 950B Exhibition Drive for a term from October 31, 2021, to April 30, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. Seconder, Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Counsel Head.
Thank you, your worship. I definitely support this motion. I think, you know, we need to do more. It's a simple decision for us to just approve it, but we're not asked to finance it. It's because of the development permit and the zoning that is required there. But I have to say, you know, even coming to this meeting this evening, you know, I see a lot of people that are needing help and, you know, are sleeping on our streets. I think we need to, you know, not only go further than just this motion today, and I know we have a summit planned, but I can't say that enough that that has to happen yesterday or soon. You know, winter is coming, and our residents need our help, and I think, you know, simply, this is a great, a great initiative for the city, but we need to do more than simply just say, here's a shelter of 20 beds. So I'm in favor of this motion, and I look forward to working with some of the services we have here, and definitely the summit that's hopefully planned in the future.
Thank you.
The near future.
Thank you. Okay, I see no one else in the queue.
Tara Lennox, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I have been receiving correspondence from citizens of our city, you know, alerting me to what Counselor Head has just stated, which is, citizens are contacting me, telling me, "Look, there are more people who seem to be sleeping on the streets and are carrying their belongings with them throughout our city. There seems to be an increase in this." And I, too, would like to see our city, you know, do everything that we can to be able to work on this problem and to be able to assist. And if that means looking at funding, then I think we should be thinking about that as well. I do have a question. I'm wondering, so I know that a motion had passed some months ago for a meeting to be held among many stakeholders that work with people who are homeless, and I'm wondering when that date is planned for.
We have a speaker coming to the next in-camera meeting to discuss that issue with us, and that's when he'll lay out the plan.
Is that the next in-camera executive committee?
Yes, so that's next Monday.
Yeah, so I guess I would just state that I am hearing from citizens that they want us as a city to work on this and to be reactive to this issue. Thank you.
Okay, I have prompted the question. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, except, motion carries. Thank you. 11.41, nope, it's still the same one. 11.5, Bar Law Number 16 of 21, Lorry Drive Walkway Closure. Counsel Zarokowski.
Thank you. I'll move the following recommendations. That Bar Law Number 16 of 2021 be introduced and given three readings. That the sale of the portion of right-of-way legally described as street That the sale of the portion of right-of-way legally described as Street Lane 6, Plan Number 65 AP 14758, as shown on Schedule A, attached to Bylaw Number 16 of 2021 be approved at a price of a dollar per square foot, plus the GST, of course. And that the portion of right-of-way legally described as Lane Street 6, Plan Number 65 PA 14758, as shown on Schedule A, attached to Bylaw Number 16 of 2021, be consolidated with the property located at 588 Laurier Drive. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the sale agreement, plan of survey, and any other required documents on behalf of the city when ready.
Thank you. Secondary? I need you shut off, and, oh, never mind, I got him. Counselor Edwards?
I'll second, your worship.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Zarokowski.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. This is a walkway that we've spoken about over the last decade. It's long overdue for closure, and I appreciate the efforts of administration with our, I think it's a much more effective and approach to consultation in the neighborhood. Having administration participate in the process, I think was helpful. This particular walkway, we've seen over the last number of years, and this is in fact a walkway that isn't as used as well as it used to be, with the development and expansion of the development in the city going westward. That pathway is no longer used as a cut-through to get to elementary schools, especially with the development of neighborhood parks along Park Avenue and Mahon Drive. The number of calls for police service has been dramatic over the last number of years. The number of calls, we've heard about smashed windows and vandalism in that area. It's simply a frustration, an escape route described by neighbors and the police themselves. It's a walkway that is up to no good, and so I look forward to a positive closure on this location. You know that myself, I, as a matter of practice, I'm very leery about walkway closure. This one, in my mind, is a no-brainer. It needs to close for the safety of the neighborhood.
And I would like to thank the people that did respond to the director, because that's what it's about. We want to hear from the people in the area, how it's gonna affect them, and they were positive, and sort of echoed some of the things that you said. So I'll move the question. Uh-oh, what happened here? I just said prepare to vote. It didn't come up. So go back, or?
Ready to vote?
No, but before, I'd go vote, prompt a question.
Ready to vote?
Yeah. Yeah, see, so just double-do it when it doesn't come up. Okay, the questions now open. Counselor Zep?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries. Eight to one, and I'll move on to the next item. 11.6, License Agreement. Oh, sorry, it's a bylaw. Sorry.
Mayor Dionne, we now have bylaw number 16 of 2021 for the closure of a portion of right-of-way adjacent to 588 Laurier Drive. The bylaw is for three readings tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Zarokowski?
So I moved that bylaw number 16 of 2021 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None, I'm prompting the question. First reading by law number one. Ready to vote? Counselor Zep?
No.
Thank you. Counsel Zarokowski?
And I move that bylaw number 16 of 2021 receive second reading.
Thank you. Secondary?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. No discussion, I see, in the queue, so I will prompt question. The question is now open for a second reading. Counselor Zep?
No.
Thank you. Motion closes. Counsel Zarokowski?
And I move that leave be granted to read bylaw 16 of 2021 a third time.
Thank you. Secondary? Counsel Edwards?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you.
If I could ask just to speak briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'm voting in favor for leave to be granted, as this is something that is being passed by the majority. I just wanted to note that I too am leery of closure of walkways. Walkways generally in our community are, help us, you know, to maintain health and a sense of community and enjoyment. I recognize that this report really does a very thorough job of explaining why this particular walkway meets the criteria that could be closed. And, you know, a big feature is that this is a walkway that just goes into a back alley. However, I do understand that people, especially apartment buildings nearby, use it. And so that's the rationale I wanted to provide as to why I was voting no. But I do wish to, I'm going to be voting yes, to allow leave to be granted so we can conclude the issue tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for that. Counsel Miller?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I heard from a few people in the area. One's my dental hygienist, actually, and she's very happy that this is happening because she is tired of all the vandalism that is going on. And I sit on a different board with an ex-police officer, and he found some machetes in the back lane, and they really need it closed down for those reasons.
Thank you very much, Counsel Miller, for sharing that. Okay, I'm gonna prompt a question for leave, and of course, we need unanimous consent for leave. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Okay, leave is granted. Counsel Zarokowski?
And so I move that leave be granted to read bylaw 16 of 2021 a third and final time.
No, not leave. You gotta read the bylaw.
Okay.
She was slow moving the screen.
That bylaw 16 of 2021 be read a third time in past. Now bylaw number 16 of 2021 be now adopted, sealed and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you. Counsel Edwards?
I'll second that.
And familiar worship, I'd just like to thank my colleagues. This decision here will make a meaningful impact to the people that live in that neighborhood. It's a change they've talked about for decades, and so I appreciate that support.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna prompt a question for the third and final reading. Counselor Zep?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. 11.6, License Agreement Renewal, Lake Country Co-op. Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the license agreement between the city and Lake Country Cooperative Association Limited for the use of the portion of right-of-way legally described as Site 1, Plan Number 101841881, as shown on Schedule A, be approved for a 10-year term from November 1st, 2021, to October 31st, 2031. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other required documentation on behalf of the city once prepared.
Thank you. Counsel Miller?
I'll second, Mayor Dionne.
Thank you. I do have a question to the writer report. Why 10 years? Five years has been our standard, and all of a sudden, boom, we got a 10-year. Can you ask me what's the difference in between a five and a 10?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for the question. This is a bit of a unique circumstance. Certainly, five years is more the norm. When we look through our files dating all the way back to 2003, the intent of the original agreement was actually over the course of 50 years in 10-year terms. So we followed the intent of the council of the day, and that is reflected in the recommendation.
Fifty years. Okay, thank you for that answer. So it's some previous council hogtied us. This is a good way to describe it. Okay, you're right, okay. Oh, Counsel Zep?
Can I, um, the queue? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Question for administration. I just wanted to confirm that I understood the issue here. Can I just confirm, so this land, the frontage land that we're talking about, is owned by Lake Country Co-op? And within the agreement, it's the city that then allows that land to be operated as a roadway? Did I understand that correctly?
No, we'll get the director to explain it. Go ahead, Director.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counsel Lennox Zep. This particular strip of land, again, dating back to 2003, was subject of a sale. There was some contamination issues of the day, and this strip was essentially deemed undevelopable. It couldn't be sold. It couldn't be transferred into formal vested right-of-way. So it remained in the name of the city. So that's another reason why, you know, speaking to the longevity of this lease and how it's unique. So it is not owned by the Lake Country Co-op. It is actually owned by the city of Prince Albert, and it's being leased to the abutting property owner's co-op and the next report that you'll be considering this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I see none in the queue. So I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Motion carries. 11.7, Lease Agreement Renewal, Stockyards. Counsel, oh, sorry. Counsel Head?
Thank you, your worship. I'll move that the license agreement between the city and Stockyards, Prince Albert, GP Limited, for the use of the portion of right-of-way legally described as Site 1, Plan Number 101841881, as shown on Schedule A, be renewed for a 10-year term from June 14th, 2021, to June 30th, 2031. And two, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other required documentation on behalf of the city once prepared.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I second that.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue for discussion. Oh, sorry. No, is your light still on? Nope, hang on. Sorry, go ahead, Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the director. I noticed that the agreement was for $100 a year, and the previous was $1 per year. I'm just wondering that, why the difference between the two?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Director.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I know the previous report that you just considered were for different. Unfortunately, I don't have much information. That is essentially what was approved by council. Certainly both a fairly nominal amount, but why the difference, I'm not sure.
Maybe we could ask the museum to look the agreement up. Okay, with that, I'm gonna prompt the question. It's now open. Counsel Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries. Accepted. 11.8, Infrastructure Plan, Federal Gas Tax Funding Program, Marcus Road West Extension, roadway construction. Counsel Zarokowski?
I move that the application for Federal Gas Tax Fund Program Infrastructure Investment Plan under the Canadian Community Building Fund for the Marcus Road West Extension roadway construction in the amount of $2,157,356.30 be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the Federal Gas Tax Fund Program Infrastructure Investment Plan on behalf of the city, along with any other documents once prepared.
Thank you. Counsel Miller?
I'll second that, Mayor Dionne.
Thank you. Discussion?
Tara Lennox, uh, for the queue.
Okay, I have Counsel Head, then I'll go to you. Counsel Head?
Thank you, your worship. Maybe for the city manager or director, I don't know who to direct this question to. More so just explaining for those who are maybe viewing tonight and didn't read the report how we got here today. A little bit of a background here from maybe the city manager or the director, I don't know. Whoever seems more appropriate or have more of the answers. No one's looking.
Yeah.
I lost the class.
Director?
Thank you for that question. I believe the history here is that we started this project the previous year, and we did the underground work. Then this year, we're doing the surface works, the roadways and sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. And we started last year as this project was under that meat program. And the provincial government, or the federal government, or both, they doubled our gas tax as a one-time COVID benefit, which gave us the opportunity to make our gas tax dollars pay for this project, allowing meat dollars to go to other projects. It's kind of a little bit of a move money from this pot to this pot, and then we'll have that balance for other items. I think that's, I think, does that answer your question? Is that what you're looking for?
Kinda, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel Head.
Thank you. I just looking at the options to recommend. City Council under the Canada Community Building says that we may request that a different project be forward for consideration. Have we considered any other projects other than this one?
Uh, we did meet as a team with the city manager and the directors, and we did ponder all the particular projects that were in motion at the time. This particular one met all the qualifications for the gas tax money and was approximately the right dollar value, so that you're only moving money into one project. And gas tax also allowed us to do this one, which was already in motion. They said that was okay because of the terms of that extra COVID gas tax money. So it made sense to just move the money into one project and cover one project rather than try to disperse it and financially handle a dozen different projects. This allows that money to be freed for other purposes then.
Last question, Mr. Mayor. What, how far are we done? How far are we in completion, or are we completed the Marcus Road West Extension project?
Uh, that project should, the roadway should open possibly tomorrow or the next day. The only thing that will be not completed due to the timing of the seasons is we haven't completed the pathway that will follow along the roadway. It'll be like a rotary trail, an asphalt walking path, rather than a concrete sidewalk, because we're not gonna allow anybody to front Marcus Road West, just like Marcus Road East. It's just back of houses, not anyone facing it. So that'll be coming in the spring, because we just don't wanna, unless the weather really hangs in there for us, the contractor might attempt it this year. And the only other thing is the second lift of asphalt. Generally, when we build new roads like this in subdivisions, we usually put the first lift down, let one year sit, just in case there's any kind of issues with that surface. Then we can repair it before we put the final lift on. So in the spring, we'll be putting on the second lift, but the road should be open in a day or two.
Last question, your worship. Are we gonna be receiving a bus report? I know it's related, kind of not related, but are we gonna get a report on the status on our city bus transit?
Yeah, different report. We'll bring that up.
I can't answer that. I think that would be something for the city manager or the mayor. Sorry.
Okay, on the infrastructure, any other questions? Now, I did drive the Marcus Road yesterday, went around the roadblock. yesterday, went around the roadblock. So it is paved. What they were finishing yesterday was connecting the existing rotary trail close to Sixth. There was a, they did a cut across there, so I was pleased to see that because I'd used the rotary trail. I didn't want that to be entered. And then they were just finishing up some contract, some atwork around Catch Basins, and you could tell they were pretty well ready. People will notice one thing about the first lift. There has been a second lift put on in a certain area, probably from here to the Herald, and that's at the intersection, and that's strictly because the first lift wants survive a stopping and going, stopping and going. So they put the second lift on. So if you do notice that there is some of the second lift on, I did ask the question yesterday when I was there, and they explained it very well, that, and that just makes sense because of the stopping and starting. But I do believe the director's right. It should open in a day or two. Okay, Counsel Lennox Zep?
Thank you. I had a question. Probably this question is for the finance director. This report references $317,000 to be funded from the Civic Facilities Reserve, and that's under the section called Land Acquisition. And I received a question from a member of the public. The question is, what do we currently use the Civic Facilities Reserve? What is that currently funding, paying for?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Director Finance.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. The Director of Corporate Services, or Director of Community Services, would probably be a better person to answer this, but usually it's for any kind of city facility work that needs to be done, and that could be new construction or upgrading of facility.
Maybe I could ask that of Community Services in that event?
Yeah. Director.
Thank you, Mary Dionne, to Counsel Lennox Zep's inquiry. I think one of the main commitments of this reserve at this point is the new recreation facility. So I know through the process, this has been the funding source for our commitments to date.
And by new recreation facility, I assume you mean the arenas and aquatic center? And follow-up question on that. This $317,000 to be funded for the land acquisition regarding the parking at the parking lot out of Civic Facilities Reserve, the member of the public wanted to know, was that $317,000 already earmarked for any other work, any other usage?
Director. The answer was no on my behalf, but she asked you.
Oh, okay. No, I, I'm, I'm not aware of the specifics to that question. Sorry.
Just, sorry, the question being, the $317,000, is that, was that money intended for any other usage?
That's not, that's not my understanding. No, no.
And just to clarify, do we pay for anything else with the Civic Facilities Reserve other than the new aquatic and arenas facility? Does it go towards anything else?
Since, since it's been committed to the new recreation development, it hasn't received any other dedicated funding reasons.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, here are none. I'm going to prompt the question. Okay, the questions now open. Counselors up?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. 11.9, counsel and committee. Counselor Zep. Oh, sorry. I had to talk there. Counsel Zarikowski. Sorry, I said Counselors up because I picked a note on the last issue, make sure to ask her, and I was looking at that note. So Counsel Zarikowski, please. Sorry for throwing you off.
I move that administration be authorized to utilize the unused $28,000 from the approved allocation previously approved of $140,000 for the council chamber audiovisual solution from physical stabilization to purchase an audio video solution for the city hall main boardroom to address the following. Put a conferencing system in there, including cameras, audio system, including speakers and microphones, the installation, and including the maintenance and servicing agreements.
Oh, you said 20. Could you clarify? You meant 28?
$28,000.
Thank you. Seconder, Counsel Cody.
I second it.
Thank you. Counsel Zarikowski, you're up, or you had a comment?
Sure, just a quick comment. You know, this is something that we've talked about anecdotally for a while now. We were hoping this project would come under budget, and it did. And so it seems like cousin COVID is still with us, and so how do we continue operations here within the corporation and have our meetings, have our committee meetings moving forward to continue the business? And I think since this previously approved dollar amount came in under budget, there are dollars that were already approved that are existing, and that if we retrofit that conferencing system upstairs into the boardroom, we can continue with our business.
Thank you. Now I see no one else in the queue, so I'll prompt the question. The question is now open. Counselors up?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. 11.10, Prince Albert Library Board Appointment. Counsel Brodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Senadella Don Lee be appointed to the Prince Albert Public Library Board for the term ending December 31, 2021.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Kilmair.
I'll second that.
Thank you. No, just in case, I'll just explain why it's a short term, because it's just for a few months. Is it, she's filling in a resignation that we had on the library board. Okay, I see no other questions. I'll prompt the question.
Tara Lennox Zep for the queue, please.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tara.
Thank you. Firstly, a question. So it is a short term, and then does that mean that there will be appointments for all of the library board members? Looks like around December 31st?
Yes, there's only actually two that will be coming up this December, and then two the following year.
So this, this position is one of the two that are coming up due December 31st?
Correct.
And then just a comment. I, I intend to vote in favor of the proposal here. Just a comment about process is that I would like to see us as a city consider some, you know, looking at more diversity and, and more focus on thinking about, you know, our process when it comes to appointments. Currently, our process for appointments to boards and committees is that the mayor's office makes the recommendation and, and provides it to council, and then council votes on it at that stage. And I, I would like to see us look at some other cities' processes. For example, the City of Edmonton puts a focus on diversity. And there are, a positive thing I want to say is that we are really lucky that there are many citizens in our city who are applying to sit on our many boards and committees. And it looks like, you know, a wonderful list. And so the public knows that, you know, the people sitting on these boards and committees, you know, we're not paying them any funds. This is a, you know, volunteer commitment on our boards and committees. So as I said, I'm voting in favor here. However, I do hope that we may in the future consider a focus on, on increased diversity. I'm not saying we don't have any diversity on our boards, we do, but an increased diversity for our boards and committees, and maybe improving our process to focus on that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that. I do take that into consideration, but sometimes the application pool that you get restricts that, but we'll keep trying our best. Thank you for your comments, and I'll prompt the question. Oh. Counsel Brodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we do have diversity. It's easy to say we need to increase diversity, but, but when you look at the committees that I'm on anyways, whether it be the Arts Board, the Destination Marketing Board, and I, well, I was on the library board, yeah. There, there was diversity there. And the Community Service Advisory Committee, there's diversity. And, and, and I think that was the attempt. And I know the, the recommendation comes from your office with the Community Service Advisory. You consulted with me with, with the creation of that particular board, and, and we do have diversity. We have equal number of male and female. I think, in fact, community services might have more female than male now on, on that particular board. Destination Marketing, you know, there's, there's two counselors, and then there's community members. And again, there's diverse, there's, there's women, there's indigenous people that, that identify as being indigenous, et cetera. So I think there is diversity. It's easy to say we need to increase diversity. It's, that's a popular thing to say, but when we look at the structure and the composition, the demographics of some of our boards, the ones that I'm involved in, there's definitely diversity. So the public should know that, that, that there is an attempt by this council to include, be inclusive, and to have the boards and the committees look like our city. And that's, that's, that's what we want to do. And this, you know, council, like, we have three women on, on this, you know, council. Should we have equal number? It would be ideal to have more women. Of course, it would be to have more women on council, but a third of council is, is women right now. So we are, I think, inclusive and have diversity. So I just needed to say that. Thank you.
I agree with that. Thank you very much, here. Okay, I'm going to prompt the question. Okay, the questions now open. Counselors up?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Recall. Okay, 11.11, consultant approval, exterior design project delivery model. I'll turn it over to the Director of Public Works for some explanation and video.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm pleased to be in front of you today to show you the exterior designs. We went through the steering committee on this, and I wanted to hit on a couple of the, the reasons for this election. So in the report, there's eight bullet points, kind of summarizing some of the reasons why we picked it. The folded design is inspired by and represents the parkland and the boreal forest. So the idea is it should change color as the sun moves across the sky. In the afternoon, it'll have a grayish color. In the later afternoon, it'll be a sand tone, and then in the evening with sunset, hopefully, it'll have a golden wheat kind of a tone. The folds in the metal are also designed to give it strength and resistance to things like hailstorms. There, you can see it right there, the evening shot of the front entrance. The metal is manufactured in Western Canada, so it's going to be locally sourced. There's other facilities within Western Canada that have used this metal. The color is factory applied. It's a polyvinyl iodine fluoride coating, and it's commonly known as a canard. The coating is a pure thermoplastic fluoropolymer, so it should not be reactive and possess many coats, coating benefits. It's also chemical resistant. It's got a film barrier. It's chemical result, resistant, solvent resistant, has excellent wear and abrasive resistance, and it can withstand most weather elements. And the final one is also, it's very fire protective. So as you look at these photographs, the second one here, that would be, sorry, there's the second one. So that would be a morning shot of the park on the northeast area. The pool is to the right, the hockey rink is to the left. This one here would be mid-afternoon on a very sunny, maybe August day. So the sky is very light blue, and the building is looking quite a white in color, quite light in color. This would be an evening shot on the north end of the pool. So if you're coming in from Marcus Road and looking south onto the building, the sun is starting to set, and everything is getting golden, and the lighting changes, the, the metal finish on the building. This is a, an aerial view. There's no color in this photo, but just to give you the latest layout of the whole thing. So you're kind of hovering over top of the building from the southwest, looking to the northeast. And that just, the pool is on the left, the twin pads are in the middle, and the new event center is to the right-hand side. And then, oh, there was one more at the end there. This is showing the event center and the twin pads and the pool. Maybe that's the grand opening day, I'm not sure. The sun is setting, all the lights are on inside, and it's giving a nice glow to the entire facility. You should be able to see that from the highway quite nicely. Of course, this is a rendering. It's not going to exactly look like that, but that's the best rendering that we can give you at this point in time of what it'll look like. So that's, that's what the building shall look like. And now, before you go ahead with the little short videos, I think maybe I'll cover the other topic too, which was the design build, design bid build. And so we were asked to look at different ways of performing the construction of this project, and there are different ways of doing it, and we did go over it with the committee. But in the end, the, based on the, how far along we are into the project, because there are probably 50% completed design, we will have 95% completed design by Christmas. We will be 100% design and tender-ready at the beginning of January. We'll be looking to put it out to tender in late January. We should have prices back by late February, and we should be breaking ground, we figure, about March 14th. So based on that schedule, we presented with our, our project manager and our architectural team that we should consider and stay on the design bid bill program that we had started. It'll be the most common form of project delivery. It'll also engage the contracts with the consultant and the designer, and the owner retains, retains control of the design. We have say all the way through, unlike other ways of moving forward. Procurement laws are well-defined, so we know exactly what we're in for. And there's a solid strategy, as I just laid out. We know the timeframe and the schedule going forward. It'll be a public tender. They will be pre-qualified tenders, so we can't have any fly-by-night operators. They'll have to be pre-qualified, and then they'll get the full set of drawings and design specifications, and then they will build their prices. And this will also allow the city to proceed with the lowest price and the earliest start date. So now, we do have some very short videos. They're animations of the photographs that you just saw. They're only about 15 seconds long, but each of them tries to show the sun as it passes over the building and how the lighting changes on the building. So hopefully, the clerk can load these up for you. So this one here is from the park side. If you just click that again, it's only a few seconds, and watch the building as the sun rises. seconds, and watch the building as the sun rises and comes to midday. And then into the shade. And if you can go to the next one. This would be from the north side of the pool. So if you're on Marcus Road, going past A&amp;W, and you're coming into the site, here's the sun as it passes over the building, and now we're going into the afternoon, into the late evening, and the lighting on the building should start to turn more golden. And then finally, this is the front entrance, mid-afternoon, sunny August day. And now the sun is starting to set, and the shadows are getting longer. The lights will come on the building. And now it's evening, and the stars are out, and the lights light up the building underneath the canopy. So that's the goal. That's how it should look. That's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, motion, please. Counselor Kilmar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the folded metal panel cladding be approved as the Aquatic and Arenas Recreation Project exterior design, and that the project delivery model for the Aquatics and Arenas Recreation Project proceed as a design bid-and-build project.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Cody.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Good presentation. Oh, Counselor Miller.
Yes, I would like to know, are we rushing this approval for the design, or is this what we're going to do, or what's happening here?
Thank you for the question. So I wouldn't say we're rushing it. They have put a lot of thought into this. Part of the project team, the members of administration that are assigned to this project, and members from the Steering Committee, have seen previous renderings and sketches. We went into great detail about the design of the exterior of the building, and metal siding is the most economical way to finish the outside of this building. Alternative would be stone or would be brick. Those kind of alternative costs will be much higher than we can afford. If you look at things like other stadiums around the country, they've been going with metal siding. That's not to say that we won't have some features inside the lobby of the building to give it more of a warmth feeling, sort of like the walls of council here. There will be some tindelstone on the walls, none on the floor, because that was made very clear. We don't want that on the floor. But they have spent a lot of time coming up with this design, and we seem to be on schedule and on track, as I said, to have complete design at the end of the year. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions. So I'm going to prompt the question.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was asking if I could also be in the queue, please.
Okay, hang on. Let me get back out of here, because a few of you jumped up at the last moment, even though you can go in the queue quite early and I can see you. Go ahead, Counselor Zapp.
I've received some questions from members of the public. Question for the Director of Public Works is the intention that in regards to this, that a tender would be put out in advance so that potential local suppliers for the exterior would have the opportunity to provide a price?
Thank you. So the way that the process will work is, just before we get to 100%, so probably in December, the pre-qualification will go public on SAS tenders. That pre-qualification will be a form of, and I'm going to estimate approximately 15 pages of documents. We'll give them an outline of what the building is about, the size of it, maybe even one of the layouts of it, a drawing. That's all they get at that point. They have to provide to us proof that, as a general, a general contractor, they have the ability to complete this project on time and on budget. Their job will be to show us their resumes, the site supervisors, the project leaders, other projects that they've done in the last five years that are equal in size and value. All of that information will be given to us, and with our, our team will determine which ones are qualified. Only qualified general contractors will get the entire design package of tenders, specs, and drawings. Only those guys can actually submit a bid. Their job will be to go out to the subcontractors around the province, local people, to find the flooring supply, the steel supply, the glass supply, whatever have you, the different products and the different contractors. They will have to work with those general contractors to submit their bids. In this case, you only bring in one bid for the entire project. We're not going to try to project manage this by each piecemeal item, because we would lose control of the project and the price that way. So yes, local contractors will be able to bid, but they'll have to work with these generals who are pre-qualified, and all of their subs will have to be able to meet that kind of specification. If they're not big enough or have the ability to finish the flooring in the way that it's designed, then they would have to go look for someone else. I'm not saying that they can't, but there will be some people locally that definitely are going to be in this project.
And just so I understand, does that then mean, just speaking about the exterior cladding, does that then mean that it's possible that someone, you know, more locally or from Western Canada, could be the provider of the cladding, or it could be, the cladding could be provided somewhere outside of Western Canada?
Well, as I have stated, the product is available in Western Canada, so knowing if that's what we're specifying, contractors are going to look for close-by products so that they don't have to pay for shipping. So most likely, it'll be from somewhere in Western Canada for that metal siding, but it'll be that kind of a discussion point for contractors and their subs, is where they source all of their materials. Certain things aren't built in this part of the world, and so they'll have to come from wherever they come from.
Perfect. And I had a member of the public ask me if this cladding falls within our budget for this project.
Thank you. So my understanding is this, this falls within the budget that we've been working with. It's really hard to know exactly the price of this metal with the volatility of the entire supply chain in North America due to COVID-19, but it will be cheaper than brick or stone guaranteed.
Okay. And then, in regards to the design build and bid, I had a member of the public ask me why the project delivery model is only being determined and voted on now, and why that project delivery model wouldn't have been done earlier in the process? Do we have a response to that?
The design bid-build process is the process that we started at the very beginning of this project last September, and we've been carrying on that process, that train or that roadway, right from the beginning. The question was brought to us during the last Steering Committee. Can we look at the other models, just to see if there's any other way that we could maybe speed up the process, which we sent our project manager back to do exactly that, and he came back with a report that said, based on where we are today, that we should stick with the model that we started with. So it was from the very beginning. We're just confirming it today.
Okay. And then, I think those are all of my questions. I have some comments to make. So the majority of members of council are members of the Arenas and Aquatics Center Steering Committee, and...
No, let me correct you. They're not the majority, sorry. They're not. There's only four members. They're not the majority of council. We don't allow committees to be the majority of any committee.
My understanding is that there are four members of council plus the mayor who sit on that committee, so that would be five members.
No. No, there's Counselor Edwards, Counselor Kilmar, Counselor Zarikowski, and myself. That's four.
Okay.
Next question.
Okay. So my concern is that, and I'm hopeful maybe this is something that could be looked at into the future, that at the public city council meeting, for example, tonight, we only have a three-page report available to the public on these topics. And I found myself in a position where I couldn't, there were many questions that were being asked of me that I could not answer. And I think it would be smarter for, on the public council committee, that we also have more of the written documentation. For example, you'll note at the very end of this report, on the city council agenda, it states attachments, and then it says exterior presentation pages, pages 11, 13, 17, 19, 27, which I think would be the photographs. But we at Public City Council, we don't have that full presentation. We have some pages, but not the full presentation. And I think it would be smart to have the public have the data before, you know, for the public of perhaps that full presentation, unless, of course, it fell under FOIP. If something falls under FOIP or one of the, you know, the requirements of not being public, then that's a different story. But it seems like there is a lot of opportunity here to provide more data publicly so that the counselors who are not on this Steering Committee would have it. But more importantly than the counselors having it, I think it's really important that the public get to hear the, you know, that, for example, that full presentation, not just the pictures out of it, but more of the presentation, or as much of the presentation as, you know, is able, other than FOIP. Another example is the idea of the project delivery model. In this, we only have a three-page report, so I am not able to, I don't know the other types of project delivery models that were being considered. And it, I think that we owe it to the public and also owe it to the counselors who aren't on the committee, to have more of that material on the public agendas so that we can know that. Here's another, and here's my last example, the cladding. It looks beautiful. What a great opportunity. It looks like a great choice. The director in the meeting was able to tell us that the other options for exterior would be much more expensive. But in that report, I can't answer that to the public before the meeting, right? Because in the report, it didn't say that, doesn't state comparisons or different types of exterior. And so I really think that we, that it would, it's better for everyone to have more information available in the, you know, in the public report ahead of time for the meeting, rather than just in the meeting, trying to cover all the bases. Thank you.
I will send you, again, the schedule for the Steering Committee that's overseeing this project, and you're more than welcome to join us. We'd look forward to it. We've had other counselors that are not on the committee come to the committee meeting. So counselors that want to be well-informed and get their information correct, they come to those meetings, and I'll resend you the schedule, and you're more than welcome to join us.
Can I just make a mention on that topic, and I should have said it earlier, that that is an opportunity for the counselors. I'm thinking more for the public, for the public to see that information. And, I'm sorry, I had another note here on that.
Are you reading off texts that are coming to you, or do you have free notes? Like, you keep adding to your presentation. So you're confusing me because you're reading down, so.
Right. No, no, I make my own notes. So that, no, this is not information coming from anyone but myself. So what I had made note of is, if you take a look at the city website, which is for the, it's the Aquatic and Arenas Steering Committee, it has a link on it, and it says agendas and minutes on it. And so I took a look at what, you know, what would the public be able to see? Because, you know, it's one thing if a counselor can go to these meetings, but it's another thing if it's available to the public. And on that city website, I was surprised to see there are no minutes publicly available. There's one agenda, and it's from the April 16th. It's the agenda, but no minutes from that meeting yet. And it's just another example that I think we could improve and have, I think it's better for everyone to have more information available. And so if we have that link on the website, that we're going to provide minutes and agendas to the public, then that is something I would like to see us follow through on. Thank you.
Okay, I've noted that, because it should be updated. Okay. Counselor Zarikowski.
Thank you, worship. When the, a couple of questions for the Director, if I may. When the architects came forward with their recommendation for the exterior cladding, was there a consideration to the availability of these materials?
Yes. That was one of the things that we talked to about at the very beginning of the project, to make sure that materials and fixtures and things that are going into this building would not only be as locally sourced as possible, but also supply for the repairs and future operation and maintenance. For example, like the heating and ventilation, the types of faucets in the bathrooms, the types of toilets, all those things we're looking at to make sure that those are places where we can get supplies, get replacements close at hand, if not from Prince Albert, from Saskatoon.
That's good. It's all very well and good to recommend certain materials, but if they're not available, that affects timeline, affects the end price. Appreciate that. That's good. The other question I have is, when we talk about the design and the delivery method, when the design of the public youth-focused public library branch moves forward with its, with the design, is there enough capacity in the common area here to handle the washrooms for the capacity that will be at the branch library, so that the design will not have to include its own washrooms? Could you talk to me a little bit about the capacity? Will it be able to handle it? Is that a consideration for the branch library moving forward?
Absolutely. The building will have capacity for, if there's going to be some kind of an addition in the future, like you speak of as a library. We are more than accommodating in washrooms and circulation space and parking and all of those areas. So everything is being considered so that, I mean, the real load for the building, occupancy load, will be the twin pad arenas. More people will be in that facility than the pool, and obviously the pool more than the library. So when it comes down to the lowest denominator or the highest denominator, whichever way you want to look at it, it becomes the hockey rinks. And you have to make sure that you have the capacity for when they're loaded. Correct.
Okay, I see nobody else in the queue. So I'll prompt the question. The question is now open. Counselor Zapp?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries eight to one. I'm accepting it. Thank you. Okay, that's it for the reports. Number 12, unfinished businesses. Counselor Head.
Thank you, your worship. I see, I noticed that there's no report in our agenda items today, so again, I'm going to ask to delay these motions, and I guess I'll put it with the report, attached to the report, so we won't have to see it next month. But I'm not willing to withdraw these as of yet. I don't want to lose sight of our motions here, and of course, the report that's going to speak to these items. So I'm willing to delay them until that report comes forward.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Miller.
I'll second Mayor Dionne. Thank you.
I'll prompt the question.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
He's referring his three notices motion till we get the report that's previously coming on what we're doing. Instead of having it on every agenda till the report comes. Okay, the motion's now open. Counselor Zapp?
Yes, and if you need, I don't know, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Accept. Thank you. Number 13, Mayor and Counselors' Form. Counselor Bratnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have one. I want to wish the residents of Prince Albert
I want to wish the residents of Prince Albert, Saskatchewan, Canada, Happy Persons' Day. And it's a very significant day today. It's back in 1929, five courageous women challenged the British North America Act, as it was known, that women would be people. And it went through a series of court challenges. The Supreme Court of Canada ruled against them. And then the Privy Council of the British House of Lords ruled in favor of them. And that was the final decision at that time to any court challenge in Canada. And so women celebrated in 1929 that they were officially recognized as people. Now, the impact of that is great. And we, it's part of our History 30 course. And the impact is also great because what it says to us, and every one of us, is that don't give up on Canada. Even though, or Saskatchewan, or even Prince Albert. Even though there was such negativity towards women in 1929 to become people, they didn't give up. They still believed in Canada. They pushed forward. And so this day, today, that's what it reminds me of, is that, you know what? We're not perfect as a society. Prince Albert's not perfect. Saskatchewan's not perfect. Canada's not perfect. But don't give up. Don't just complain, but offer solutions. Be part of the solution. And offer solutions to make our country a lot better, our province and our city. And that's what these five women did in 1929. So I want to just wish everybody a happy Persons' Day today.
Thank you. Any other comments under mayors and councillors' form? Nope. So we'll move on to number 14, inquiries. Does anyone have any inquiries? Oh. Counselor Kilmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an inquiry to community services. I'm just wondering in the downtown area, what bathroom facilities are available for use by the general public? And what hours they might, they are available?
Well, there isn't any. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. To Counselor Kilmer's inquiry, I think just for clarification, you're speaking of city public facilities that we have in the downtown area?
Yes.
Okay. So what we do have in the downtown areas, of course, City Hall, the Prince Albert Arts Centre just located out front, the Margaux Fournier Centre, the EA Rollinson Centre, and also the Historical Museum. Come to mind also the, sorry, the Prince Albert Library, Public Library, would also fall in that area. I think probably for the purposes of this evening, rather than go through each, because they all vary in hours of operation, all vary in the different specifics to their operation, I can follow up to the inquiry, make sure that through the process, council gets that response from the department. And that way, we can make sure that we do any follow-up in that manner. Sure.
Okay. Any other inquiries? No? Oh, Counselor Zarikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of inquiries, if I may. I'll write them down on my sheet for an answer later. It's fine.
Thank you.
One dealing with the walkway from Sixth Avenue West that empties out into 6A Avenue West at about 27th Street. So you're coming up. And just before you hit 28th, for the, there's a walkway that goes from Sixth Avenue West and empties into 6A Avenue West. Anyway. Over the last year or so, it appears to be, well, it is, it's crumbling. It's, there's some sort of, something going on underneath the ground. And it's to the point now where the city has done some patchwork, moving forward here and there as it starts to chip away. And it's almost like there's a bit of a water leak underneath the ground. And one of the inquiries I sent forward is, is there a water line going underneath that walkway? And the answer was yes. So I'm wondering now if we can just do a little bit more homework and see, is there a water leak there? Because now it's starting to affect the neighbors, the fence, the concrete, the flower boxes. And if it is our water line, if it is our leak, then maybe we can do something about that. So I'd like to extend that invitation. The other inquiry I have is on Woodbridge Drive at the condo there, 2781. I'll write this down in front of the condo. There's, of course, some development going on there. And the residents were asking me if it's a city, if it's a developer. I do not believe it's a city. I think it's the developer doing the work there. And the concern is with all the folks walking and recreating in that area, that that, right now, there's lots of exposure, there's dirt, there's grass, there's sprinkler heads being exposed. And they're hopeful that, and I'm hopeful that we can get some of that landscaping done before that white precipitation from the sky falls that we shall not name. So I'll send that inquiry forward through the inquiry process and see. And I'm sure as a matter of course of business, it'll get done. I just want to make sure that it does.
Could I ask you to add to your inquiry? Some of the equipment that's gone into some of those lots has actually broken the sidewalk. So if you could just add, when the broken sidewalks, and we have notified the contractors. But, you know, winter's coming, they should be repaired. So then they're not a slip and fall hazard.
Thank you. I'll add that. The other, the final one is the rear lane that is in between 6A and Woodbridge Drive, that rear lane. That again, administration has worked so hard when that development started occurring, when that roadway went in there, to make sure it's graded properly, so that slope that they put in the storm drain. And all that hard work has been wiped out with the development that's going on, with heavy equipment, with the trucks. You recall, we only put one layer of pavement so that they would use that side while they were using the back alley. So again, I'm hopeful, because all the hard work of administration has been wiped out, literally, that we can again, take a look at some of that elevation. Because when spring comes, it's nice that that water will flow the way it's supposed to, the way it's designed to. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Brodnick.
Thank you. My inquiry is again from a resident in Crescent Acres who wants to know about busing to get their children to school. And currently, there's nothing that's happening in Crescent Acres, city buses. And that's what they rely on, is city buses and city transportation. And so they were wondering if there's any possibility of getting that all-day bus to always run? Because that's the one that goes into Crescent Acres or accesses Crescent Acres. And when it's not running, and/or at last minute notice not running, those children don't, can't get to high school. And particularly, it's the Catholic system, that St. Mary High School that they can't get to. Whereas Sask Rivers does run school buses throughout the entire city to get their students to Carlton and Westmore and Pacey. And so they're relying on that. So they're wondering if we could somehow try to get a more consistent busing. And I know we have challenges with busing. And that's what I said to the resident. And I encouraged them actually to phone the principal of St. Mary to talk to them from a school board perspective as well, what can be done. And so I'm just wondering, is there something in the works to make it more consistent for our students getting to school? From Crescent Acres in particular.
Thank you. That's probably why the principal of St. Mary's called me today. So we're actually convening a meeting with the principal of St. Mary's and the new transportation manager and the director later this week to discuss that. And he's actually going to come up with some ideas of the route to Mazzie that doesn't have to go far. No, so still put it in in your inquiry, but we will be working on later in the week. And I'll make sure that you're well-informed. You're welcome. You're welcome. Any other? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move to notice of motions. And I have one that I'd like to have heard tonight. And it is, any child that is 12 years old as of October 13, 2021, has 90 days from October 13, 21, to get fully vaccinated. And every child that turns 12 after October 13, 21, has 90 days to get fully vaccinated from the date of their birthday. That's my motion, and I will ask later on for leave, for it to be heard tonight. Is there any other notice of motions? Okay, hearing none. Then I'll move to motions. So I will pass the chair to Counselor Edwards, and I'll charge your light. Okay, you're on.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Dion. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll move that notice provision be waived to permit consideration of the COVID-19 regulations, 12-years-old motion at tonight's meeting.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Counselor Kilmer.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussions? So we still can have discussions? No? Okay, all will go to the vote?
Tara Lennox-Zep here.
Sorry, Tara, there's no discussion on leave. It's a discussion.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I forgot we're on, I forgot that we're on leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
So did I. That's okay.
Yeah, we're on leave, so.
We're voting on leave.
Yeah, right there. Leave.
The votes open?
Counselor Zapp?
Yes.
Carried unanimously.
Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and we'll go to the motion now.
I move that any child that is 12 years old as of October 13, 21, has 90 days from October 13, 21, to get fully vaccinated. And any child that turns 12 after October 13, 21, has 90 days to get fully vaccinated from the date of their birthday.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Kilmer.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. End discussions.
If I may?
Yeah, you may, Mayor Dion.
What this was, as you notice, we passed our regulations just a short week ago. And we've been monitoring. And one of the challenges that we had, of course, were children turning 12 to get vaccinated. So what this does is they did have a chance to get vaccinated when they were 11, actually in late August. But lots of parents did not know that, and I didn't even know it. So we met today, our committee, and we came up with this resolution. And what it does, it covers anyone that's 12 as of October 13. So that means if they were born in August or September, they now have 90 days to get fully vaccinated. And then any child that turns 12 after that date has 90 days. So this carries on as long as the regulation's in. So if your child's birthday is in December, you have 90 days from his date of birth to get in. Same thing in January. It's just a moving scale to allow 12-year-olds to participate at the same level as everyone else because they're sort of in the gray area when it comes to vaccination.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I do have one comment. I did talk to a physician as well. And he agreed that it's a good idea to move something like this forward because after the new year, you could be participating as a sport, in a sport. All good as an 11-year-old, but you turn 12 and all of a sudden, you're not eligible. So this makes, this makes lots of sense.
Well, and then it covers, if you don't mind me following up on that comment, then it covers any time you turn 12. And so it's sort of a floating scale. So then it affects lots of people.
We have some discussion happening over here. I'm just.
Tara Lennox-Zep for the queue.
Go ahead, Counselor Lennox-Zep.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I support this motion. I am just, I have a thought about the age. So right now, this exemption would assist children that are 12 years old as of October 13. I guess I'm just trying to think through into the future as well. And so perhaps we may pass this motion, and then this topic may come up again. I'm just thinking about as we move on to, you know, if the, if something as age requirements may change into the future. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is that the city of Saskatoon passed a similar exemption. I mentioned it at our last council meeting, which was on October 12. And they, I believe, are also giving a similar time period so that children who are perhaps 11 years old in a sport and then come into a position where they are old, you know, want to become vaccinated and are eligible so that they don't have to miss some days of their sport in the interim. So I just wanted to make those comments. And this issue may be something we might want to consider again as time goes on.
Sure. As things change, Counselor Lennox-Zep, we can certainly look at all factors affecting this pandemic. So, and this motion says exactly what you were talking about, so.
Yes, it's actually more clear than Saskatoon's. We did look at Saskatoon's, and Saskatoon's, we still haven't figured out. This one's very clear.
So any further discussions? Hearing none?
Good, sorry. Could I just suggest the word in fully vaccinated? I don't know if we want to put the words vaccinated against COVID. Just thinking about, you know, years from now, someone looks at this motion, it's not meaning to be fully vaccinated, you know, it's meaning against COVID-19.
That's correct. Yeah, we'll.
All right, we'll add that.
Fully vaccinated against.
Mayor Dion, you're good with that?
Yes.
Counselor Kilmer? Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussions? Seeing none, we'll prompt vote.
The votes now open. Counselor Zapp?
Yes.
Thank you, Pastor Janosky. Thank you for your support and support of the children. Okay. Thank you. You did a great job, deputy. Number 18, public forum. We have no one registered. Counselor Kilmer.
Thank you. I move to adjourn.
Seconder. Counselor Edwards.
I'll second that, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll prompt a question. Counselor Zapp?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Be safe and talk to you next time. Okay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.